Adopting a five-year strategic plan. This came before Executive Committee February 15th for consideration. Approval of this item would adopt the 2019-24 strategic plan as attached in the Board Action Report. This was updated yesterday, and we have before us. Introduce yourself and tell us about the updates and the process if you would as well. Thank you.
So I'd be glad to do that, but I believe Superintendent Juno has a few opening remarks, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Nobody told me that.
I guess I'd just like to start by just being very proud to bring this before the Board and really just want first to thank Erin Bennett for being the lead on this project and shepherding it through the Steering Committee and with our consultants. There's a lot of work that went into it, so thank you Erin for that work. I also want to thank the committee members who really wrangled with a lot of deep issues. You know, that when we look at this plan, it is steeped in equity, and I think a lot of good and sometimes probably difficult conversations happened in the committee. Want to thank Director Geary for being the representative from the Board and being really strong member of that committee and bringing it back to your colleagues. This draft is my recommendation for a targeted five-year strategic plan to focus our resources, our work, and our initiatives. The plan reflects what I heard from our community during my Listening and Learning Tour, my January 2019 engagements, what I heard from the Board during our work sessions and retreats, and what I hear from staff and cabinet. It's important to know that the draft plan builds on our current plan and is responsive to key district initiatives, but unlike prior plans, this year's plan embodies strategic. While our ongoing operational work to provide excellence to all of our students persists, this plan has clarity around what we are trying to accomplish for our underserved students and families. This plan is more focused because there is a sense of urgency around the issues of equity and specifically racial equity in our district. You will see that clearly stated in the theory of action and throughout the document. Because of our budget challenges, we will need to prioritize even within this plan as to the focus each year to make sure we are hitting the marks. Erin Bennett is going to talk a little bit more about the process and timeline for how we got to this point before I talk about the plan in a little more detail. Thanks.
So good evening. Erin Bennett, Executive Director of Government Relations and Strategic Initiatives. I'm going to briefly take us through a couple of slides. So the first one is around the timeline and process. So from August to November of 2018, the Superintendent embarked on a comprehensive Listening and Learning Tour to gather an understanding of the district's strengths, challenges, and what is most important to consider as plans were developed for the district's future. That input, combined with feedback from an online discussion in October of 2018, helped shape the draft before you. The district hired the District Management Group. You'll see them referenced as DMG or DM Group in the documents to support the development of the plan. I want to thank them for all of their work as they helped this move forward. We had a fantastic Steering Committee. You had the opportunity to hear from several of them earlier today, but you also have the list on the screen in front of you. The Steering Committee members had to leave, but I just wanted to add my thanks to them. They met six times over five months, really hard conversations to get to the draft that's in front of you. I believe the only member in the room now is Dr. Clover Cod, or maybe she was in the room and will be here shortly if I don't see her. So a big thanks to them, and also I wanted to add my thanks to Director Geary. She's been a fantastic Board Liaison, and I'm incredibly appreciative of the work and thought that she's put into this. So going back to the timeline, you'll see that we started with the Listening and Learning Tour. We've had, you can see the six Steering Committee meetings that were listed there. We also had two Board Work Sessions and two Board Retreats to get us to this step as well. And I did want to call out that there was a second round of engagement on a draft plan in January of 2019. I want to thank Dr. Jones and his team for leading that work. And that feedback on the draft plan then shaped what the Board saw at the January 30th Work Session. So the community has provided a lot of input, and I just wanted to thank them for all of that feedback. It was noted that there are a couple of edits in the document that you see before you. We received a couple of suggestions from Director over the weekend, and so the red line that you see in the document is from those suggestions, and I want to thank Directors for sending in those suggestions. And then, this is a graphic from DMG around the strategic planning framework, and I just want to call out that the document that you have in front of you takes you through the first three rows. So the mission and vision, the theory of action, and the priority of measurable goals. The implementation plans designed to meet those goals will include the next two rows underneath, the initiatives and the action steps. And I'll speak a little bit more to next steps after the Superintendent offers a few more comments.
Working through this plan as well, it has several priorities, and as I said earlier, it is steeped in equity and just thankful for the push actually from our community members to help us put it in writing for our plan. High-quality instruction and learning, our theory of action, was developed by the Steering Committee. The intent is to ensure racial equity in our educational system, to unapologetically address the needs of students of color who are furthest from educational justice, and work to undo the legacies of racism in our educational system. Our theory of action is built on the principles of targeted universalism, and we included language in the plan to further explain what we mean. Mission and vision, these statements are similar to the current mission and vision of the district. However, key words have been updated to better reflect the district's belief and direction, and some of that came from the last Board Retreat that we had and Director Patu requesting a few little minor changes, so thank you for that. High-quality instruction and learning experiences, that priority, we're recommending, you know, it focuses on the whole child. It includes academic, social, emotional, and behavioral strengths and needs of students. It does have an intentional focus on African-American males. We added language to the theory of action to respond to the community ask for that explanation of what does that mean. There was a real move by the committee to not be deficit-based, and so a lot of attempts to be asset-based in our language. The goals follow students' educational journey from early literacy, middle school math, ninth grade, credit attainment into college and career readiness at graduation. The next priority, predictable and consistent operational systems, directly responds to community feedback around the need for predictable and consistent operations. We have a lot of conversations in this Board meeting about what that means. I'd like us to get to a point where we're not hearing about the operational systems of our district, but people are showing up to hold us accountable to the learning of their children. We have a ways to go on that, but that's why I'm really excited about this priority. Focuses on district operational functions, recognizing that families do not distinguish between schools and central office. We are a district. The idea is to focus on customer satisfaction, communication, and service performance. It's important to have a balance between surveys and other measures, and so trying to work that in as well. Recognizing the Board's feedback around budget, the service performance goal would have functions, establish performance indicators, and then every year, a set of operational functions would be the focus to improve a level. And so those types of rubrics will be built out as part of the next steps. Our priority around culturally responsive workforce, as you know, this was a real, a theme that I heard around the city, but most strongly came from our students and the young people in our district who want to see a teacher, an educator, who looks like them, stand in front of them in the classroom at some point in their educational career. We heard it again tonight, and so I'm really glad that this priority's in there and provides us focus. We know that that's a long-term goal about recruitment and retention of staff of color, particularly educators of color, but there's also a second prong that allows us to focus on the current workforce that we have and make them more culturally responsive to the students who are in our classrooms. And so for me, it's a two-pronged goal, priority. It responds to feedback from community and students asking staff and leadership to reflect diversity in our student population. And finally, the priority around inclusive and authentic engagement. And you'll see there's not a huge shift from prior strategic plans, which I think is good for continuity of the work that's been done in the district, but it does allow us to get more strategic and more focused on where we're going to put our resources and efforts so that we can really move the needle on the things that we've been talking about as a district. This priority around engagement calls out the need to work in partnership with our community in identifying the needs and determining solutions to our challenges. It intentionally says engagement is for school and district initiatives because, as we know from our community engagement toolkit, we cannot collaborate on a highest level on everything, but we are going to make intentional focus on what is it that really needs community engagement. Students are called out in this priority. I know we are all huge believers in providing students a voice in their educational system, and so there is a specific goal targeted at student voice. I'd actually like to see student advisory groups grow across this district. I think it's a really powerful voice, and I know from sitting with students, when they are at the table helping us make those decisions, we get better. And again, in this priority, there's a need to balance survey data with other measures, and so being cognizant of that as well. And so, again, just thank the committee and staff for working so diligently on creating this plan. I think that's going to root us in equity and really drive us towards doing the necessary work that we've been needing to do for a long time. So just proud of that work, and turn it back over to Ms. Bennett.
So there's more detailed information in the Board Action Report, but at a high level in terms of next steps. So the timing of this Board Action is in order to allow schools the time to incorporate the strategic plan goals into their CSIPS as well as into budget decisions. As we saw in the graphic earlier, the next steps also include developing the initial implementation plans as well as action steps for each goal. For some measures, we will need to actually build or refine the tools to measure. So for example, we may need to refine the surveys and the survey questions based on the goals that are listed. The targets over the five years of the plan will also need to be established for the measures for which we already have baselines. The focus or the prioritization of the goals will likely occur as part of the discussion around the next year's Superintendent Evaluation SMART Goals and the selection, given the budget situation that the district currently finds itself. And then last, a multi-step communication strategy will also be used to message about the plan. And are there any questions?
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues. Director Geary, with a huge shout-out and thank you for your work on this initiative.
You're welcome. It was truly, it was my pleasure. So honored to work with the team, and you know, I did all the comments of everyone who came and testified. For me, this is, to potentially some of our critical, the critical members of our public, we have to, it says right there in the mission that we're going to provide excellence in education for every student. And so any hint that there was anybody in the Steering Committee or at any point that saw this as a diminishment of what Seattle Public Schools was going to offer in terms of education for its students is just not true, and that's why it's in the very top line. And it is true as well that it continues, there is continuity, and it goes on, but the important thing is that even with that continuity, we all know that we haven't seen the kinds of improvements, as you, Director Harris, have said. And so, we can't back away from those priorities that we have said are really important just because we haven't met them. We have to double down on them, and we have to come up with a new strategy. And so, I'm proud that this is really going to focus. What is it that we want to do? Let's just say it as opposed to dance around it. We've got a terrible gap that we need to continue to target and eliminate, and it is a shameful gap. And so, we focus on it, and we've heard that there is a culture misstep in our schools. There is still culture that needs to be reached. And so I really believe that the focus of this strategic plan and the language that we use, the language about being unapologetic in our willingness to go into our buildings and hold people accountable for their attitudes and their beliefs around the students they are teaching is embodied in this document. Will it work? We don't know. It's a strategy, and it's one we're going to focus on, it's one we're going to shout out for. So thank you for the work in developing it, and I'm going to thank my Board members in advance for their input and what I understand to believe, their belief, their fundamental belief in this work.
Make your way forward. Director DeWolff, please.
Thank you, President Harris. I don't have much to say. I know that we've certainly been deep in this work for, I don't remember the time in 2018 when you set out this calendar for this, so I know that we've been deep in this work for a long time. So I just do want to express my gratitude for the work that you've done and to organize us folks, and thank you Jill. I am greatly appreciative. I think you certainly have a really good analysis and critical lens around the issues around equity, so I'm so grateful that you got to be on that and represent the Board. Personally, I don't have any questions, so I don't want to take up too much time, but I do want to say this. Oftentimes, particularly when I'm in the community facilitating conversations, and we're talking about racial equity and racial justice, the line I like to say is that this country really was built on indigenous invisibility and anti-black racism. And I've got to assume, one could assume obviously, that our education system was deeply impacted by those values. So I see this as, while it may not solve or absolve or clear all those paths, all those hundreds of years, I see this as a really strong step toward that future that we do want to see. And so I'm really excited about this strategic plan and really, really grateful that even our students support it. So just thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Director Burke.
I also echo the gratitude. I know that from the conversations I've had with Director Geary, my colleagues, folks who have been working on this, there's been, there've been a lot of challenging conversations, rich conversations, and being candid about what our reality is here in Seattle Public Schools. And so I think that that has shaped this. I'm super excited about that. I want to thank staff for building out a little bit Section 12 of the bar. You know, one of the things that we say, you know, in this, in this plan is making clear commitments and delivering on them, and I've heard from people, "Oh, this is great. I like it, but are you really going to do it? Can you follow through with it? Will you follow through with it?" And so I think that what's been added to the bar helps provide clarity for what comes next, which is, we're going to show Seattle how we're going to follow through with it. And when I say "we," I mean the Board, the staff, the whole group, and a little bit of a timeline, and we'll keep working in that direction. I have two clarifying questions. One of them is, they're both relating to the first priority, high-quality instruction and learning experiences, and there's a footnote that defines or clarifies the meaning of high-quality instruction. And so I like the edits there, but there's a specific thing that says intentional about student engagement as one of the elements of high-quality instruction. And I'm a little wary because we have a lot of educational environments that could be engaging but not instructional. And so being intentional about engagement isn't really what I see as the seed of high-quality instruction. So I was wondering if that's something that could get a closer scrutiny because it feels like it's a little bit limiting that we're focused on engagement. So then the other one is a little bit more substantive, and it's within those goals. We talk about, under that priority, we want to educate the whole child through high-quality instruction and learning experiences that accelerate growth for students of color. So we want to accelerate growth, yet our measures are proficiency. And so this came up in our conversation with the Board. I had thought that we were going to look at growth measures. I recognize they're harder to work with, but proficiency, as I understand it, is typically in the 50% to 60% range, is the cut between not proficient and proficient. And it's a difficult thing to measure growth when you're looking at that as your measure. So I would like to at least understand, can we use growth as a top-line measure? Because it feels like that will be, you know, what gets measured gets done.
Can I ping on his comment first? One of the things we heard from the Assistant Superintendent of Public Instruction on Saturday with the Black Alliance, the Alliance of Black Educators, was OSPI is going to start measuring growth. Not proficient, because proficient is not going to prepare our students for life beyond. Is not going to, and is not presently. The other point about engagement, see, I see it differently, and we all know that I harp all the time, and I use that word advisedly, about engagement. To me, engagement is opening the door to quality instruction. If you don't have the conversation and you're not having give and take, you don't have a conversation. You don't have learning. To me, learning is in fact give and take. I don't see those concepts as mutually exclusive in the least.
So I'll take those one at a time, if that's all right. I'll start with the high quality. So thank you for both of the, oh yes.
I believe that Director Mack had comments to ping off of that as well, so that you can do a tripartite response.
I'll do my best.
We're challenging you, but that's our job.
I also want to express gratitude to everyone involved in this process. I do feel like it was iterative and that our comments were brought back, and there was, you know, there's substantial responsiveness, and I think that this, this plan does capture pretty robustly what we've been talking about. The things that I wanted to kind of agree with the concern around the, the measures that are being stated for the high-quality instruction and learning experiences, it states in the actual goal that we're focused on accelerating growth for students of color, but there isn't even one measure that reflects that. And I think it would be really appropriate that, you know, we've got six measures, five of which are on proficiency only. I think that it would be appropriate to have a measure that's related to growth. And I understand that it's difficult, but if we actually have it in our goal, it's not really appropriate for us not to measure it. So I think that's really missing from, if we're saying that we are wanting to accelerate growth, then we need a measurement. And I understand that it's difficult to get there, and we haven't, we haven't, you know, clarified exactly what that would be, but I would really like to suggest that we actually have a measure for growth because if we're saying we're going to do it, then we need to measure it. Otherwise, maybe we should take it out if we're not concerned about growth because it doesn't, to me, I mean, I just, for me, it's the consistency of, the consistency of the, the goals and measuring them and holding ourselves accountable. And if we can't do that, then, you know, there's, there's not a lot of teeth to that. So that is, that's one place where I still have concern. We did talk about that at the retreat, and so I kind of want to say that that's an issue for me, and I'm hoping we can find a resolution to perhaps add that. The other, the other, and I think it's a minor thing, that maybe it's just the consistency of the document, but under this, the first goal under the high-quality instruction, that students of color who are farthest from educational justice will feel safe and welcome in school. One of the measures is the, it says student culture and climate surveys. In the rest of the document, we changed all of those, or you changed all of those, to family and student surveys to reflect that it wouldn't just be the student surveys. And I just think for consistency, it seems like a minor edit, but I just caught that that one didn't get changed, and all the rest of them did reflect family and student. So I think that's just a minor edit that probably needs to be changed. And the other, again, I really appreciate the process and the comments that Directors brought forward and having them incorporated, and in particular, the bar language that talks about the implementation plan and how that's going to go forward and kind of the explanation around the three sections and the key initiatives and so forth. So I appreciate having that inserted into the bar, talking about the approximate timeline for implementation and next steps. That's really, really helpful. What I'm still feel is kind of opaque to me is specifically what those key initiatives are going to be, because we, you know, what are the things that we are going to be doing? And that's where the rubber meets the road. And I guess I have a little bit of question mark in my mind as to whether or not we're all aligned on which initiatives are actually going to meet these goals, which actions, and what those things actually are, because we may not be seeing eye to eye on what those are. So I'm, I'm not sure that that needs to be here, but I, I'm, I just have big question marks about specifically what initiatives are, are the thing. Is it mentoring? Is it additional after-school programs? Is it actually providing 24 credits? Is it actually, you know, there's, there's all these different things that we can do. So I don't know how to answer that question. I appreciate the timeline, but the key initiatives I think are critical to understanding to this plan, and, you know, I assume that that's going to be a robust process for uncovering as well in the future.
So I think I counted four, but if I missed one in answering, please let me know. So the first question around high quality, I wanted to thank the Directors, this is, the need for a footnote is something that came up at the Board Retreat, so this was an add since then. The definition of high quality, we had some pretty robust conversations around the complexity of actually defining it. Also giving yourself, there are a lot of texts that could guide this, but you also don't want to limit yourself as well because there's a lot of work going on right now with the foundational coursework and things like that. And so, we will, we will continue the conversations and get back to you, but I will say that there probably is not an easy answer to this, but we will take a look at that one. So on that, that one, that was my first. Second, with regards to the request for student and family culture and climate surveys, so this also came up at the retreat, and the, we had a conversation about this one too. And so, we added it in several other places and actually did not add it in this section because the measures in the instructional priority are intentionally student-focused. Although not listed, however, the family surveys will continue to include questions around safe and welcoming environment. So the priority itself is focused on students, but that was the reason that it wasn't included. Number three, so I'm going to do proficiency versus growth last. So the third one that I heard, oh, so with regards to the process and the implementation, so we were looking to the Board to establish at this step the priorities and measurable goals to define then what we will go out and actually develop the implementations for. So kind of the what versus how, and we were looking for the Board to set the what so that we could then define the how. You'll see in the Board Action Report in Section 12 that the development of those initiatives will be part of that, oh, actually, will be a large part of the implementation. I will say that with regards to the initiatives, we've had a, we call it the SMART Goal Process in the past, and the Board's focus and prioritization will occur during the Superintendent's Evaluation SMART Goals in this coming year. So we use a lot, we throw a lot of acronyms around, sorry, Director Harris, specific, measurable, actionable, reasonable, and time-bound SMART Goals. And so it is intentional that this step, we were never intending to come with the implementation plans done here because we wanted the direction from the Board first on the what. And then the last, with regards to proficiency versus growth, we also had a long, lengthy conversation about this. conversation about this, and we did send some information to the board, but I'm actually going to ask Wyeth Jesse to come to speak to this one.
Good evening, Wyeth Jesse, Chief of Student Support Services. So as Aaron Bennett was explaining, this has been a long-going conversation, and to boil this down to this tonight, to this conversation around growth versus proficiency, I think the foundation, when I heard Director Geary say, "We have unacceptable achievement gaps." When you read the mission, it says that we have an opportunity gap. That is in reference to a proficiency rate that is usually garnered on the smarter balance or the state assessment. And so when you think of things like 35% of our third graders who identify as African-American meeting proficiency as a district, and for me as a professional, I have to say that if we can't address that one statistic, we probably have failed. And so that's why we went to the ground, the floor of why this came through, to address those gaps. We went with the proficiency to address it, and not give ourselves excuses. It is a big district of 54,000 students. It does have 102 schools, and we will be monitoring growth. Growth can oftentimes be measured best with the leading indicators or some of our more formative assessments or interim assessments to monitor growth towards those proficiency rates. That's something that makes it a lot more digestible, actually, for the practitioner, the teacher, the I.A., the school psychologist, to look at those measures and do something about it throughout the school year as we work towards, again, proficiency.
All right. Why is OSPI then going to go to a growth system to balance out the schools of distinction, which are two metric points once a year?
So OSPI has generated growth measures in the past. I'll go to, I'll one-up, in one way, to the federal government for the Every Student Succeeds Act. And when they put that out and then identify those schools, they're looking at proficiency rates for targeted populations, and then we track that over a 10-year period for those populations as they grow in proficiency on the state assessment. So that's, that's a direction that we have to, we have to follow. We do our own analysis too about growth. Growth is, I'm not taking down growth. I love growth too. We've had many conversations around growth. It's just, we have the highest, we have this document, it is progressive, and it is innovative, and to lose that focus on this opportunity to say that we have a proficiency rate, again, of 35% for students who identify as African-American at the third grade on the state assessment for ELA, we just got, we got, we got to address, we can't lose focus on that. That's all we're saying.
Director DeWolff, Director Geary, and then Director Mack.
My only curiosity was just around the implementation timeline. What is the board's role in that? And is it, what are kind of our levels of engagement and approval? And just curiosity about that.
So the implementation plans won't be brought back to the board for approval. However, the board will, of course, be engaged in the conversations, excuse me, engaged in the conversations. I would imagine that it might be best through the committee process, but we need to establish what the best system for that is. In terms of timeframe, I think it's gone now. You'll see that we have a very ambitious timeline for these, why, thank you, these implementation plans regarding the strategic plan goals. And I do want to call out that they'll be the initial implementation plans, because to do this work really well, there's going to be layers upon layers upon layers, especially with a five-year plan. But you'll see that that's marched through July of 2018 for those divisions to do so. So the answer is not board-approved, but definitely involved and engaged.
Director Geary, and then Director Mack.
I guess we're not going to get to proficiency without growth. I mean, that's the way I see it, that we are so behind in proficiency, we need massive growth just to get there, so that just measuring, and I guess the question I would, I would worry about, if we start making new measures, then are we creating new means of assessment? And the one thing I don't think we want to do is create more district-wide assessments around trying to get to that. But I think growth is an important thing, because we're going to have to see a lot of growth to get to proficiency, and we're already testing it. And we're going to be able to see if we can start getting more kids to proficiency, we will see that it will be reflective of growth, and we will be able to ask about that, and there will be formative measures, but they're not going to be the kind that would, that would be as reliable in terms of the measurements. So I just, that's how I look at it, and I don't want to drive anything for another district-wide assessment of our kids.
Director Mack.
I really appreciate the explanation about the importance of the proficiency, and if that's what we're doing, I don't think that the way that this is stated actually matches that, because it doesn't say proficiency in the goal. And I, and if everything that Mr. Jesse just said, and that you just said, is what this goal is supposed to be about, is proficiency, I'm okay with that, if that's what, if, you know, if that's what we're doing. But it says specifically accelerate growth for students. It doesn't say anything about proficiency in the goal. So I, I'm coming back to the consistency in the document and having our goals match the measures. And I appreciate that this, to me, is problematic. If we're, if we're saying that we want to accelerate growth and we need to be measuring growth, and if we're saying that we want to ensure proficiency to close the gap, then we should say that.
I disagree.
Okay. Ms. Bennett, did you want to speak to that? Chief Jesse, did you want to speak to that? And then there is Director Burke.
I would just briefly speak to it, because I checked, I was reading the language too, and just again capturing the conversation, when I see the whole, when I say whole child, whole child, there's, I mean, we already do some poor work around using only one or two measures to measure the students. That was really trying to be whole-inclusive of not only the measurements on here, and some are around proficiency, and some are actually around growth. If you had, if you're talking about attendance, I grew, right? Because I started showing up to class in my own growth, and thinking the whole child, and so it really is not trying to say, hey, our only goal is just proficiency, it was to say growth in general. Proficiency is some things we do, growth, and just other general, other ways of defining some of the measures that are on here, and of course, our other work.
And on a separate note, I forgot to note one thing for Director DeWolff. The board does approve the superintendent evaluation SMART goals.
And Director Burke, please.
I think, you know, the reason that I brought it up is, is the, I'm feeling like this is a bold strategic plan. It is targeted, and proficiency does not feel targeted, whereas growth, we're identifying the students that need the most growth, and putting that out there as the measure, I think it is an "and" conversation, because if we talk about growth without proficiency, we're missing something. If we talk about proficiency without growth, oh.
Switches to the right.
We're talking about proficiency and growth. We have a priority. That accelerate experiences that accelerate growth.
So just, just to, just to kind of finish that theme, they do need to be used together, because I think if we just talk about proficiency, we are, we're missing a big piece of it, because we're trying to accelerate growth. But I just really worry that proficiency doesn't capture the importance, the innovation, and the focus that's in this strategic plan.
Superintendent, do you know?
I would just add to all the conversation you've heard, is proficiency right now is the measure, and that when we look at the opportunity gap and how we defined it, it is against proficiency on our ESPA. It is that we have 35% of students who identify as African-American in third grade being proficient in reading. That's what defines for us the crisis and our opportunity. And of course, growth will be a part of that, but I also, when I look at growth, it's like we can move a student from A to B, and if proficiency is a C, we cannot congratulate ourselves just from A to B. We have to get them to C. And so by putting proficiency out as the marker that we have to reach, it's much stronger to me, that marker, than a growth measure. But like Wyeth said, that we will be looking at growth, and educators will be digging in and finding students individually, and making sure that we are tracking them using formative assessments, interventions, to get them to the goal of being proficient. For me, that's the definition of our opportunity gap, and that's where we really need to measure and be accountable to.
Okay, do we feel comfortable moving on at this point? Okay, outstanding. Next intro item. And thank you for that very, very thoughtful conversation. Much appreciated. Number two, intro item, BTA 3 Award Construction Contract K5106, bid number B12839 to Western Ventures Construction for the John Muir Geothermal Wells Report. This came before Ops February 7th for approval of this item. Would authorize the superintendent to execute construction contract K5106 with Western Venture Construction in the amount of $1,703,500 and no cents this time, including base bid plus alternates number one and three, plus Washington State sales tax with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract. COO Podesta, take it away.
Good evening, directors. I'm going to apologize in advance, in case I start coughing, I've been fighting this thing all day. This bar that we're introducing today is kind of a milestone. This is the last of our green geothermal projects. It's to sink 80, 350-feet-deep geothermal wells as part of a geothermal heat pump system to provide heating and cooling to the John Muir Elementary School. The bids were, we had two bidders. The low bidder, Western Ventures, has done a lot of work, capital work, for Seattle Public Schools that we're familiar with. The project would provide energy-efficient heating, and what's nice about geothermal heat pump is it also provides cooling, which we don't often have in our schools. So it, we heard earlier today, the interest in the district being green, we've got a track record with five previous projects, and we're ready to go forward with this one.
How many stories is 835 feet? Is that something like six or seven stories?
It's 350 feet.
Okay.
As the depth of the wells, there's 80 wells, each is 350 feet, you know, depending if you're talking residential or commercial stories, you know, it's, let's say 30, 35 stories.
Wow.
And, you know, that way geothermal systems work is they provide on the constant temperature underground to breathe either a heat sink or a heat pump to put either heat or cool air into buildings.
Director Mack.
I just wanted to point out that the reason for consideration on this was because the, we didn't know the name of the bidder at the time, or the high bidder, which is the same for the next. That's just wanted the rest of, everyone to under, the low bidder, exactly. I just wanted everyone to understand that that's why it was not pushed forward for approval, it was pushed forward for consideration, that as far as I can tell from the minutes, which are really great, those are the only reasons for consideration and not approval. So.
The bids came in as expected, and again, it's with a known contractor.
Director Geary, then Director Burke.
So you mentioned this is part of a completion of a green initiative.
From, yes, from BTA 3.
And so I believe, I learned something at one of our BECS Oversight Committee meetings that I just wanted to share, because I didn't know this, and I'm sure perhaps Leslie, you did, because you were in the cheap seats. But there was some recognition at, not the last BECS Oversight, but I believe the one before, around Sharon Peaslee's focus on, you know, focus on getting our district more green.
And add Kay Smith Blum to that list as well, prior to Sharon Peaslee.
And so I just think it's appropriate that we, as a board, recognize the past members who really worked hard, and to see their work come to fruition over time, even once they're gone from the board. I think it's.
Can we have a party when this one's completed?
Absolutely.
Invite all the folks that have put their fingerprints on this?
Yes.
But Sharon was invited, and she was there at the BECS Oversight Committee meeting, and she was just, I think, really thrilled to be recognized in that context. And also, there are still members of the committee who continue to drill down on the district to get the longevity reports to show the efficiency. And so when we opened one of these projects in the first year, it is, you know, there's a lot of tweaks that go on. People are still running heaters and doing all of their things. And so it takes a few years to actually get the measures, but we're right at the point now where we can start actually gathering some real data around the efficiency and what we are doing. So I thought that was really exciting, and it was really neat to see her get to experience that.
And moreover, I believe, correct me, somebody in this room, we are leaders in the country with respect to green building, and our return on investment over the long term is making sense. Is that correct?
It is. That is true.
Director Burke.
Thank you. Is it typical to have a bid sheet attached to this, or is that something that's done in committee or?
Not to my knowledge.
And we went here, we spent 45 minutes talking about it. So could we address this in the Operations Committee? Okay, number three, BECS 4 Award Construction Contract, this is the last one, folks, P5123, bid number B09813 to CDK Construction Services, Inc. for the Catherine Blaine Seismic Improvement Project. Came before Ops February 7th for, and again, that's because we didn't have the bid numbers. Approval of this item would authorize superintendent to execute construction contract P5123 with CDK Construction Services, Inc. in the amount of $629,000, no cents, including base bid plus Washington State sales tax, with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract. Take it away, COO Podesta.
This, again, Catherine Blaine is to install steel brace frames and sheer walls, the gym and auditorium. This school was identified as part of the 2012 report of needed seismic improvements, and there's been other improvements made to Catherine Blaine over time for program improvements, but we hadn't gotten to the seismic work yet, and we found a contractor, and we're ready to brace the school.
Director Burke, please.
I just wanted to make one comment that I forgot to during my comments that I need to share with the board before we meet.
Please do so. Please do so.
The, there's, Advanced Learning Task Force has been doing some work, and there was a communication that came out to the board in the, in the February 15th Friday memo. Essentially, there's a four-step process. The first step is around mission vision. The first step is around mission, vision, and that came to the board for a work session. I had promised, promised to Wyatt that I would communicate to directors and to the public and I totally spaced it during my public comments, so I didn't want to let that go. Take a look at the Friday 15th Friday memo and that will be reissued, I believe, at this upcoming Friday memo. So I just wanted to give people a heads up, please take a look at it. Mission, vision, Advanced Learning Task Force, an important feedback milestone.
Okay. And do recall as well that at the retreat, we talked about the option, should board members choose to exercise it, to add to the Friday memo. So again, that's a stream of communication that we can take advantage of, should we so choose to do so. One page and you put your name and the date on it. Okay, it would appear to me that we are adjourned. Thank you so much.